Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Chris Jeffers. I'm your city manager. I welcome you to our 2015-16 preparation for the winter and how it may or may not impact the Colby Fire impact area. And we appreciate you making time to come out today. Probably hour and a half presentation. We have a lot of information we want to share with you so that you have an appreciation of what these experts that you'll hear from today are seeing and how that all comes together as far as our preparation for this winter and what we will be doing when storms do occur and how we'll be asking for your assistance during those storms, most likely in a number of them as we go forward with that. So this slide, just, I want to always put this up here to remind us that Glendora is no stranger to mud and debris flows. We had a pretty severe one in 1969 for those residents that still were here and still around. This is all, these pictures are off of Rainbow Drive. That house is the house now, so you can see that house was pretty well inundated by the mud flow after those rains occurred in 1969 and how it's still vulnerable today should we have a similar type scenario occur that we did in 1969. But we think we're much more prepared than the community was in 1969 from that. So again, today, we're gonna, I'm gonna do some introductions of our team over here. We're also gonna give you an update of the assessments. A number of our people were just up on the hill, foothills yesterday poking and pricking the soil, looking at the vegetation, and spent about four or five hours up there yesterday doing their analysis. So you have the latest, greatest analysis at your fingertips today. We'll also talk about update on the debris modeling. We'll review the mitigation and preparedness measures, our communication alert pro calls, and then we'll have a Q and A session. When you came in, you were given a three-by-five card. If you would write your question on that, we will have a couple of our cadets come through. All you have to do is raise your hand, they'll pick it up for me if you need more cards. We'll do that. That helps facilitate the Q and A session at the end from that process so that we are here. Like I said, it's a full presentation here, so there's a lot of information to get through. Our first presentation is gonna be by John Thornton, our district ranger for the San Gabriel River Ranger District Angelus National Forest, and he's a key partner with us with the Forest Service and was instrumental, him and his team were instrumental in fighting the fire, and they're also instrumental in helping us mitigate the problem. So, John?
Thanks for the applause. It makes me feel like every time I go home dinner with the family, they always are glad that I'm back home from work and I get such an applause, especially when you have four, you know, adolescent boys, so. What I'm gonna talk to you tonight is the change in the watershed condition that's occurred since January 2014, and we'll see if I can use this correctly. So overall, on this slide, what we looked at is what changes have occurred since the fire. When the fire obviously is burning, we're concerned about life and property associated with the direct effects of the active fire. But after the fire goes out and the smoke clears, we're still concerned about the threat to life and property associated with what we call post watershed conditions, when you have the potential for rain on the vulnerable soils and the potential effect on life and property with flooding or debris flows. And so what, this is just a quick snapshot, and we'll go through a couple of slides, is right after the fire, one of the main things we looked at was what is the condition of that watershed in terms of the vegetation cloak that is protecting the watershed? And so we went out and took the measurements, and you had 12% ground cover, effective ground cover, right after the fire. After a year and a half that, after a year and a half, it is now at 28%. So that is not a large cover. That is largely attributed to the drought that was occurring when the fire, before the fire was burning, and obviously the lack of rainfall afterwards. A lot of that increase in the vegetation from 12 to 28%, that's not much ground cover, is attributed mainly to invasive weeds. Probably 10% of that is associated with our native chaparral communities out there. What appears to be going on out there is when you have a fire, and chaparral is used to that, but when you have a drought condition before, when the plants are stressed, and then you have another couple of seasons of very dry weather, the root systems for those native plants basically aren't able to sustain themselves, and then you have an invasion of weedy species that come in. And so there is a likelihood that the type of vegetation, the chaparral that is very protective out there, is what we call changing. It's a type conversion, and it'll probably be for years and years and years converted mainly to a weedy species that is a lot more prone to more often having fires and less ground cover protection and watershed stability in that system. The other thing that we looked at, and we'll show pictures of that as well, is what is the amount of water repellency reduction? And right after the fire, and water repellency reduction is what we can call a tin roof effect. When the fire burns, it volatilizes gases. Most of those go into the air. A lot of them are driven into the soil by a temperature gradient, like when you're standing by a campfire and you feel the heat coming through your Levi pants, that's kind of an energy pulse, and that pushes these hydrocarbons that are in gas form into the soil, and they coat the soil particles, and they make it repel water. So right after the fire, we found that 67% of that watershed was like a tin roof, that the water wouldn't want to infiltrate the soil. There is a natural breakdown of that over time, and right now it's at 32%. So those watersheds up there are improving, but it is still 32%, so basically 32% of that area still has like a tin roof to where it won't soak in the soil, it will want to run down the hill slope. What we're looking at is after the storms, especially in February 2014, it started an erosional pattern that is, with that rainfall, that is, now makes it easier for additional rain to start going downhill much quicker with that, a lot more energy and a lot more ability to pick up and carry soil downstream, and that's what Dennis Staley will be talking about in his debris flow modeling. The other item that we've looked at is what is the source of sediment supply that causes these debris flows on the hill slopes and the channels? And they still have a lot of rounds in their chamber. There's still a lot of erosive soil on the hill slopes and a lot in the channel that still could provide that material to go ahead and move downstream, given the right rain So again, this is just a cartoon and figures to give an expression of a crab out of its shell, and so if you have a hermit crab, and if it's in its shell, it's pretty well protected, but if you take that shell off, which is like the vegetation, then it's quite vulnerable, and our watersheds are still quite vulnerable out there, as evidenced by some of these pictures. On the left, you'll see a picture taken immediately after the fire, and then later that year in October, looking at the ground cover, it just was increased by 4%. So that's essentially no ground cover. Now, we took it again a year later, and the same similar pictures go from 16 to 28%. But if you can look at those hillsides on the right, they're still very bare, so they don't have much protection or mulch in terms of the rainfall impact to absorb it. They don't have material on the hill slopes to act as obstructions as water goes down the hillside, so it's what we call a very long hydrologic slope length, meaning it is very efficient at moving water long distances and carrying a lot, a lot of sediment with that. So still not a good condition. Those are some before and after pictures, like the crab out of the shell on the left, the crab is out of the shell, the right, the crab even is still out of the shell, and when you go to this year, the crab still pretty much is out of the shell. And a lot of what you're seeing in that picture are the weedy species, which don't have deep root structures to protect for some of the concerns that Dennis Staley and Mark Jackson will talk about with El Nino when we have long-term rainfalls. We have less stability deeper in our soils because those plant roots are decaying and they're not growing back. On the left was before the fire in February, I mean before the rainfall in February, and you can see the erosional pattern that is set up, so it's already a lot more efficient at moving water quicker down the hill slope. This is a water repellency picture that I talked about, where the bead of water in the top left, basically if you have like two magnets, and if you have the two magnets that repel each other, it's hard to push them together, and that's what's happening here. The water doesn't want to go down into the soil, and that's why it beads up so tightly. And then obviously, when you have the magnets the right way, they attract, and that is if the, if the soil isn't water repellent, then the water will go readily into the soil. And so some of the, and this is just an expression of the kind of information that goes into the modeling for runoff and debris flows, is when you have water repellency, only a certain part of that rainfall is gonna be going into the soil, and the rest is gonna run off down slope, causing the potential for floods and debris flows. This just shows an attenuation or the loss of ground, I mean of water repellency over time, and typically between three to five years, you'll lose a lot of the water repellency. It's a natural breakdown of that, and with the data that we collected compared to the first year till now, you can see 67% of the area was water repellent in February 2014. In October that year, it was 59% because we didn't have much rain, we didn't have much plant activity breaking up the soil to break down that water repellency, so very little increase. And then this year, you can look that we're at a 32%, so it's gone from 67% down to 32%. But that'll still give you a picture on the right of, that's, that was even after the half-inch of rainfall that we had just a few days ago, and you can just see how in areas that water, that bead stood up there for like 15 minutes, so it does not want to infiltrate. And about again, 32% of that watershed is still in that condition, which is a lot more than naturally, it probably would have been about 5 to 8% naturally. There is some natural water repellency, but that's still quite elevated compared to natural conditions. And I think with that, then we'll let, turn it back on over to Chris Jeffers.
Thank you, John. So next, I'd like to call up Dennis Staley with the USGS. He's actually flown in from Colorado yesterday to help us do with this analysis, so if you give him a big hand as he comes through.
Thank you very much for inviting me again this year. It's hard to believe that a year's passed since we were here last October. As Chris stated, I'm a research geologist with the USGS. I work on the Post-Fire Debris Flow Hazard Project, and I'm based out of Golden, Colorado. So the reason I'm here is just to kind of describe what, what post-fire debris flows are, you know, what, how they initiate, and then talk about some of the key ingredients for those, for those processes, and compare what the situation was last year versus what we see this year, and kind of provide some context in terms of the rainfall that we've, that we've seen so far and what we might be able to expect if it is, if it does turn out to be sort of a rainy winter. So what are post-fire debris flows? A lot of this is a repeat from last year. So they're different than the landslides that you might expect in other places. They initiate during high-intensity rainfall, so as John clued you guys in, the soils after a fire are less able to absorb water, so if you have rainfall rates that exceed the rate at which you can absorb water into the soils, you get runoff. That runoff starts at the top of the hill slope. It eventually, it runs down the slope, starts eroding material. A little bit further down the slope, it erodes more and more material, and finally, that bulks up and becomes a debris flow or a sediment-laden flood. Those types of processes are very hazardous when you live below it. They're, a flash flood is a serious situation. When you start throwing mud and boulders and trees into that flash flood, things, things become serious pretty quickly. So what you see here is you have this, this progressive sediment bulking that happens during high-intensity rainfall. You don't necessarily have a discrete source of material. It just kind of comes from everywhere on the hill slopes. The likelihood for something like this to actually initiate, doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be a function of how much it's rained beforehand, both seasonally and within the storm. We've seen these things happen after maybe 10 minutes of rainfall, and we've seen them happen after, you know, three months of kind of constant rainfall. So we found that the probability of something happening doesn't necessarily depend on the antecedent moisture conditions, but the magnitude has been demonstrated, at least experimentally, to coincide with, with the amount of rain that may have fallen either earlier in the season or during that storm. So the volume of material that comes out of the drainage basins may potentially be a factor, a function of the antecedent rainfall. And then finally, when you're going back through here, you often see evidence of both debris flow processes and flood processes. So for most people, that's basically an academic distinction, but it, but it does matter for the researchers when we try to predict how these things may occur, just because they operate in different processes and they, and they have different forces and balances associated with each one. So the key, if you think about it as a cookbook and a recipe for what really contributes to debris flow, there's a few things. So if you look, this is a kind of a textbook post-fire debris flow right here. This is over in the station fire that burned in 2009. So you have, the fire comes through and burns off the entire canopy, so you have a lack of protection, both from raindrop impact and surface protection from runoff and erosion processes. As John showed you, that you get a water repellency too, so you, the amount of runoff generated for the same unit of rainfall is quite a bit more than it would be in a natural unburned state. The San Gabriels are quite famous for having lots of material available, so there's an abundant sediment supply. And then finally, when you have these three factors and then you pour high-intensity rainfall on top, that really dramatically increases the likelihood that you're gonna have, that you're gonna have a hazardous event. And so what happens is you get the rainfall up here, rain runs down the slope, eventually picks up more and more material, there's a transition that happens, and finally, it runs out in this big slug of rocks and mud and sticks and all kinds of things that could be hazardous for those situated at the foot of the slope. So if we were to take a look at how these factors have evolved since the, since we were here last, back in October 2014, well, we took a look. So here's October 2014. There was, at that point, there was very little vegetation recovery in the basins, so you can see, you know, a few plants here with the basal clump of new growth and slopes with, with nothing, nothing growing basically. We go back to the same place and, you know, things are, things are improving, but there's still, there's still quite a bit of bare cover, or bare soils where there isn't much cover. So the surface protection really hasn't recovered as much as we'd really hope to see in a year and a half since the fire. Abundant sediment supply, so again, October 2014, this is up above, one of the, I think this is Hook East possibly, so there's a crib structure here and a debris basin down here. This is looking just up above the first crib structure you come to. Lots of material for transport. Looking up the channel itself, you can see things that, these rocks were probably brought down during one of the very first rainstorms that you guys had. Plenty of material in the channel that was, could easily be transported by flowing water and down into the debris basin. So again, this is, this is this year. You can see we're getting some vegetation recovery, but again, these, these are just kind of weed, perennial weeds that don't really provide a whole lot of protective cover, especially for large flows, and lots of materials still tucked up in there. So, so there's still abundant sediment available for transport. Not quite as bad as it was last year, but still, still a hazardous situation. And then finally, our main ingredient for getting these things going is rainfall. So what we have here is a, is a graph that shows, this is each one of the times it rained since the fire happened. So our first storm was late, late February of 2014. This is rainfall intensity on the y-axis, and these bars represent the, so the red is 15, peak 15-minute intensity, and the blue is peak 60-minute intensity. So I'm just gonna talk about the, the red ones here real quick. So the way we predict if we're gonna have a debris flow or not, sort of the best way we can predict is if, if the rainfall rate exceeds a certain intensity or a certain amount of rain falls in a given time period, then we know that the likelihood that something's gonna happen increases dramatically at a certain point, and that point is our 15-minute threshold, which in the area up here is right around 20 millimeters an hour. So if we just look, we didn't really approach that threshold too many times, so we really only peaked over it here, here, and here. So three times during the past year and a half have we exceeded the 15-minute threshold, and each one of these storms, it only creeped up over that value just for a very short period of time. So there was some debris flow activity up, up in the watersheds. Material was moved around, and the good folks at Public Works and their debris retention basins were able to easily handle the amount of material that was mobilized, so to no ill effect in down here. So this is one of the biggest storms that we had this past, past year. This was in December of 2014. This is, I think some mud ended up in, in streets and in people's yards on this guy. What we have here is the rainfall characteristics for the storm, elapsed time in hours, we've got our 60-minute intensity, and our total storm accumulation. So you can see, we did peak up over our 60-minute threshold during this storm for, for just a few, for just maybe 20 to 25 minutes, I think was about the time that we were over threshold, and we probably had about, let's see, so 30, 40 millimeters of rain, so it's about an inch and three-quarters of rain in a period of nine hours or so. So if we were to compare that to some more of the famous storms that we've had around here, this is back in February of 2010. We'll see this picture a couple times, I believe. So this is over in the station fire where 30, 43 homes were damaged. And if we were to plot that same rainfall data, so here's our data from the storm in December on the Colby Fire, so, and then we plot that on the same type of graph we looked at before, our elapsed time, our 60-minute intensity, and our total accumulation. You can see that this storm was quite a bit longer, almost over double the amount of precip fell, and there were several peaks, so there were one, two, three peaks of rainfall that exceeded our rainfall threshold. And there were three different debris flow surges that occurred during this storm. The third ended up, so the first two filled up the debris basin, the third one clogged it, overtopped it, and resulted in the, in the houses being damaged. So, so you can see, we've got this storm that, pretty moderate, modest compared to this larger storm that happened just down the road a few years ago. Now, the most famous one around here is the 1969 storm. 100 million cubic meters of material was, was mobilized out of the canyon above Rainbow Drive, 200 homes destroyed, and you can read all about it in this National Geographic article. So it attracted worldwide attention, this, this event. If we were to take our rainstorm from December of 2014 and plot it on here, this is it right here. So there's a little tiny blue line that you can see, that's our total accumulation. We've got our peak intensity over here, but you can see it's just a little blip. So this storm lasted, you know, almost 450 hours, several pulses of rain that exceeded threshold, 700 millimeters of rain, so, so I don't, at 25 millimeters per inch, that's, that's an awful lot of inches of rain, and we had a massive debris flow that came out of the canyon above Rainbow Drive and caused a lot of damage. So in the context of this storm, the storm that we had in December was just a tiny little blip. So we need to really be conscientious that even though it's rained hard a few times, we really haven't seen anything like what could potentially happen during a really wet winter. So the take-home messages here is that we've got a time period for, for sort of a restoration of national condition, natural conditions, where anywhere from, we're estimating five years, but it depends on how much more vegetation recovery there is and soil recovery. Our risk of flooding and debris flow can continue, it'll lessen each year, but it can continue to still be high for another three to five years. The threat of the post-fire debris flows in the coming winter is particularly high if it is as rainy as it could be and has been shown in other, other times during the past 30 to 50 years. And then please, don't become complacent because nothing has happened yet. As you can see from the rainfall rates, we really haven't had anything that would be considered anything but a modest amount of rain. So please listen to the Weather Service, the Department of Public Works, your local city officials, the emergency folks, listen to them. It's still a very dangerous situation. And with that, I'll, I'll leave it up to the next speaker. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, the, I think the man of the hour, the person, Mark Jackson, the chief meteorologist in charge from the Weather Service up in Oxnard and Ventura area, is now gonna give us the latest forecast of what we can expect this winter with the forecast that they've got right now, which will be a critical part to our response plan from our first responders. Mark?
I'll save that applause for the next time it rains on your picnic, to match John's comment. Okay, thank you for having me here today and for the city of Glendora and all the other officials. What I'm going to do, in the past, I've tried to, especially last October, tried to give you sort of a forecast for what we expected for the winter season. I'll do some of that. Of course, everybody knows El Nino is here. May not be able to tell by looking out, but El Nino is here. Go over kind of a refresher, hopefully, for what some of the protocols are, for how we determine, you know, when we issue a watch, when we issue a warning, what those communication, lines of communication are. So the latest El Nino update, and the timing of this was just a little off. The Climate Prediction Center in Maryland issues updates on the second Thursday of every month, so that's tomorrow. So I do have some embargoed information that we can't release until tomorrow, but nonetheless, and I'm gonna need to go back, what we have are, everybody has heard that of the El Nino conditions currently, we determined, we determined if it's an El Nino based on several factors. One, the primary factor being the sea surface temperatures, and I, you've got a sneak peek at the next slide, but the sea surface temperatures in the Central Pacific. So we have had ongoing El Nino conditions that are strengthening. It's forecast to be a strong El Nino persisting through the winter. The forecast of the ocean temperatures could be as warm or maybe even warmer than 1997-98. Now, that's not to say that we will have the exact same impacts and rainfall as 97-98, but it's at least a start. That's one thing that we can compare back to. The, we have to first be prepared for wildfire season, we can't forget that, and we're right now in the middle of, you know, October. We're just getting going now with our wildfire season. We've been fairly lucky so far this year, but again, all the way through October and November, there's that potential for some Santa Ana events. And even as we go into the next few days, we have some, some fire, elevated fire danger as we go into Friday. So this is the, a sea surface temperature plot where you see the reds are where, this is an anomaly, where you see the reds, that's where the sea surface temperatures are above normal. So, so what we see is, what we like to see is this, is this pattern as far as an El Nino, these warm temperatures coming across the Central Pacific. This black box represents what's considered the Nino 3.4 region. They actually, the climate scientists divide up this entire equatorial area in four different regions. This is the primary one that we track from week to week, from month to month, to determine the status of El Nino. So this is another thing of, that is kind of the wild card, that from a rainfall prediction standpoint, this is the wild card. It's all this warm water up in the North Pacific, and when we see heavy rainfall from past strong El Ninos, what you get is a very strong jet stream, zonal jet stream going across the Central Pacific like this. And so what we really need for that rainfall to first occur is for this, kind of these warm temperatures to break down a little bit, which we have seen those happen a little bit within the last few months. We've had some changes where it's not, this was much, there was much more red in the last few months. So nonetheless, this is the latest. I'm not gonna compare this to what it looked like in 97-98. I'll just say that it looks a lot like 97-98, or actually, I should say October of 97, and the fact, the only difference being there was a little bit cooler water up in the North Pacific in October of 97. Now, how does this compare? So right now, this, this is a three-month running average of sea surface temperature. We like to do three-month averages to kind of weed out the knee jerks over a week, week's time. So down on the bottom, you see, this is March, April, May, April, May, June. So this goes back to last spring. This is sea surface temperature difference from normal, so there's half a degree Celsius, one degree Celsius. This is warm. And as we go through here, here's summer, fall, so this is September, October, November, October, November, December. So El Nino is typically a wintertime phenomenon. Peaks in the winter, November, December, January, even into February, and this is, this blue line is what the temperatures did in the ocean in the mid, in the middle of that And this is, this blue line is what the temperatures did in the ocean, in the middle of that Pacific, that black box back in 97-98. This green line is 82-83. Here's where we are right now. The projections of where this line will go are somewhere up in here. So, we, these two events, 82-83, 97-98, are really the strongest El Ninos we've seen on record. Not to say that, you know, 2004, 2005, we had 34 inches of rain in downtown Los Angeles, that was a weak El Nino. But we all, probably a lot of us remember what happened in 97-98, 82-83. And if you apply that correlation to what happened in those years, this is a season that we definitely need to be prepared. So, how does that translate to what kind of rainfall we might get? Well, unfortunately, you know, it's one thing to forecast what the ocean temperatures are going to do, it's a whole nother thing to forecast what the seasonal rainfall is going to do. Believe me, it's a challenge to know how much rain we might get next Tuesday and Wednesday. But now, we're looking at a seasonal rainfall forecast and go back. And so, the, what this is, these are six past strong El Nino years, 57, 58, and all the way up, there's 97, 98. Where you see the darker greens, that's where the precipitation was above normal. This bottom graph, the very dark green, is 200% above normal. So, if there's, down here in Los Angeles, we average about 15 inches of rain. So, this 200% would be about 30 inches. As a matter of fact, in 97-98, downtown Los Angeles got 31 inches of rainfall. The most that we've seen, that I've seen since I've been here the last 10 years, was about 20 inches. And so, I've yet to really see anything even similar to this or like 2004, 2005. Now, we have had a couple of El Nino years, strong El Nino years, where we did not get the heavy rainfall across the state. As a side note, as far as the drought goes, we've accumulated about a 30-inch deficit in rainfall over the last four years. Now, just because we get 30 inches of rain in one season doesn't mean the drought's over. What it means is that we now have to then start building up that snowpack. We have to build up the reservoirs, we have to start giving ourselves access to the aqueducts from the north. But that's just as a side note on the drought. Now, looking at it another way, when we look at, and Dennis showed some of these graphs, when we look at debris flow potential, one of the things that we have to consider is antecedent rainfall. How much has it rained, say, over the past two days or even over the past 12 hours? And in 69, one of the things that was pretty apparent is that we actually had quite a bit of rainfall before the real heavy rain came through and we had that debris flow. And it is a factor. If we get a storm that moves through here over just a one-day time period, then a lot of times, the systems can handle that, even though we may have heavy rainfall rates. So, this graph is a graph showing from, in the gold is 82-83, 97-98. These bars represent 24-hour rainfall accumulation downtown Los Angeles between November 1st and April 30th. So, right here, January, February. So, wherever you see these lines go up over this, that's over one inch of rain in 24 hours. In 82-83, we had 13 days in which downtown Los Angeles had over an inch of rain. 97-98, we had 11 days. Historically, going all the way back to the late 1800s, we had observations in downtown Los Angeles, we averaged four. So, about four times as many days in which you'll have over an inch of rain. And really, one thing to be aware of is that, notice there's a couple of bars here that are very close to each other. Late February, early February of 97-98, and late February of 97-98, extremely heavy rainfall. And that really, when you look back at the past El Ninos, February is really the peak month for the heavier rain. So, if it's not raining by the end of October, there's still lots of time, even when you consider November. If it hasn't really started raining a lot by the end of November, there's still lots of time. But this is one thing to really be aware of, and this is where, when we get heavy rain over multiple days, back-to-back-to-back-to-back, that's where the system becomes very stressed. So, the Climate Prediction Center forecast, this is the best that, at this point, we can do in terms of a seasonal forecast. The way to look at this chart is, consider that we start out with equal chances, 33, 33, 33. We've got a 33% chance of below-normal rainfall, 33% equal, and 33% above-normal. So, where you see, where you see the green, that's where you've got now a better than, actually twice better than 33% chance of above-normal rainfall. So, this forecast very much reflects what a typical El Nino pattern shows, heavier rainfall within Southern California into Southern Arizona, drier conditions up in the Pacific Northwest. And this is for January, February, March. And this will be updated here, I believe next week is when they'll update that again. So, just to review, you know, we've had some discussions with these burn areas. Right after the fire has occurred, we have first-year thresholds. When the USGS goes in and they give us rainfall rate thresholds, you saw them on those graphs that Dennis showed, that we then use to determine when to issue watches and warnings. Well, in a perfect situation, there's been enough vegetative grow back that the rainfall rates then can be a little bit higher, takes a little bit more rain to produce those deep debris flows. But we are continuing to use the first-year debris flow rainfall rates, and especially based on some of the reconnaissance that was done yesterday up in the burn area. And so, we look at these rainfall rates, if we see that there's a potential to exceed these rates, we'll be in touch with the City of Glendora, we're talking with the police department, and really help, you know, as much as maybe a week in advance, we're talking to them about some potential for some of these rainfall rates. So, just as a last slide here, some reminders, ways that you can get information from the Weather Service, on Twitter, on our webpage. We do have a mobile version, if you go to weather.gov Los Angeles slash mobile, you can see our mobile page, and it's free. If we see that there is a potential for those kind of rainfall rates, we'll issue a flash flood watch. And what that means is roughly about a 50%, forecastor confidence is about 50%. We'll try to issue that, it could be as much as 36 hours in advance, but ideally, it'd be in that 24 to 36-hour timeframe. A flood advisory may be issued if we think that there might be minor debris flows, not considered a threat to life and property. If you want to call them a nuisance, they would be a nuisance occurrence. And then finally, a flash flood warning, that's when we consider that the likelihood of debris flows and flash flooding is either imminent or we know that it's occurring. And again, as far as call to actions, and you know with the City of Glendora, that they're taking all the precautions necessary with their, that you'll hear about in a little bit, with their coded alert system, that hopefully, if it's gotten to this point and everything has worked out as well as it should, then evacuations have already occurred. If evacuations haven't occurred, or if you're still there, then the best guidance is to shelter in place, don't go out into the roadway, shelter in place in the interior part of your house. And again, can't emphasize this enough, to make sure to follow the instructions from the City of Glendora officials, their website, we check their website, and to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And I said this last year, October, I think this model for what's being followed here for debris flow preparedness and response is perfect, and hopefully, we can, it can continue to work as well as it's worked so far. Thank you.
So, you've heard what the foothills look like, and now what the weather forecasts are turning to be. And now, so I want to call up our director of Public Works, Dave Davies, who can start our discussion of what preparations we've put in place and what will happen from response part should storms occur. Dave?
Thank you. This is a shot of the La Cuenada mud flows, and the magnitude of these are pretty incredible. As you watch down the street now, you see it's picked up an 8,000-pound piece of K-rail like it was nothing. So, the first message we want to send is how important it is to be safe. Never try to cross any type of mud flow of any kind. We've had some cars moved around in the mud here, just in a little bit of rain that we've had. And comparatively, the most important thing to understand is that we've only had Phase 1 flows at this point. We haven't seen anything like that. We've had water up to the curbs, we've had four or five inches coming down Rainbow Drive, but we haven't had anything that's significant. And when the bigger flows do come, as you can see, he's standing on the mud, it turns as hard as concrete in very little time. We can't do anything about stopping the flow when it's coming, we can't clear it until it's done flowing, and when it does stop flowing, it gets very hard. We had a catch basin in one of the events last year. It took two days to clear it out. We had to use jackhammers to get the mud and debris out of there. So, it was, it gets, it's very intense, and this is the type of thing that can happen in a larger phase flow, which we have not yet seen. And that's why the concern that we have about the pending rain season, if we get those intense rains, those larger flows are going to occur. This is from 1969. Again, if you look at the photo on the right, there's, these are the tops of houses, and people are walking here on top of it. Again, it drives very, very hard. This is the inside of a house, and here's a guy standing on the mud. And this would have been, my assumption, a day or two after the rain started flowing. So, what is it that we're doing to try to be as prepared as possible? Every time there's even a hint of rain, we hear from Mark and his office about how intense the upcoming rain is going to be, and then we, as a staff, get together and decide whether or not there's going to be an alert level established. We immediately go out and check all of the storm drains and catch basins to make sure that they're clear. We go out and inspect the K-rail to make sure that everything is secure, all the reflectors are there, all the sandbags are there, all the crash barrels are there. So, we're ready to go. And the minute it starts to rain, Public Works crews are out in the field, checking drains and checking the conditions in all the various areas. The K-rail that we have, we've added, we're up to just under two miles of K-rail out there. We've added some as we've seen the behavior of some of these storms change. One of the things we can't predict is a clogged drain. There was a clogged drain on private property that brought mud and debris down Glendora Avenue midway through downtown. That didn't show on any of our previous maps because we didn't know that that drain was going to get clogged. Also, prior to any event, we make sure that there are plenty of sandbags available. Currently, we have about 14,000 on hand. Our street yard is at 440 South Lorraine. If you know, if you don't know where that is, it's just above the railroad tracks, there's a service yard. We have pallets of sandbags out front, and we keep those stocked. And if something big is coming, we open up the yard and make sure that you can get as many sandbags as you want, and you may have as many as you can take with you. So, we do try very hard to be prepared, as best prepared as we can, so we can minimize the impacts. And then, also initially, once we know, let's say that there may be some potential rainfall events that could provide something larger than a Phase 1 event, we immediately get a hold of our on-call contractors so we know that they're available. We do the same with our staff. We warn our staff, if it starts sprinkling during the day, we oftentimes make the decision, okay, we're going to our 12-hour shifts. We send people home and then go ahead and work the longer shifts. So, we do our best to be as prepared as we can. So far, we've been very lucky. I think the longest it's taken us to clean up is about a week, and the hardest thing to do is to get that final layer of silt off of the pavement. But with the sweepers out there, we've been lucky enough to get it out in about a week. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Next, we're going to have Pat Wood from the Water Resources Division. I call it flood control. I know they do more than just flood control, but that's one of the things. She's with Los Angeles County, and she'll sort of talk about what they've been doing and what they do in the basins that are critical to our protection plan, and talking about some of the things that we want to impart upon you, what you can do on your own homes. Pat?
Hello. Again, my name is Pat Wood. I'm with County of Los Angeles, Department of Public Works. First of all, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Well, one of the good things about, you've heard about all the stuff about the debris and the terrible event that happened in 1969. Well, a lot's been done in regards to debris mitigation since that 1969 storm. We've had debris base, additional debris basins that were installed, stream stabilizers that were also installed in some of the water courses upstream to slow down some of the erosion, and additional storm drains and catch basins were also put in. Here's the Colby Fire area. You'll see the blue dots on here, that is, those are the debris basins. And there are five debris basins in Glendora. You have Englewild and Harrow, which were actually put in place in the late 50s, early 1960s, so they were here for the 1969 storm. Hook East, Hook West, and Westridge were installed after the 1969 storm, and they were enlarged about 15 years ago. Here's an exhibit that we showed at an open house back in 2013 for the residents here, and it shows how a debris basin functions. On the top, you'll see where the, where the debris will come in, we have, what part of the debris basin is that we have a spillway and an outlet tower. The spillway is basically the storm outlet for the facility, and the outlet tower's there to de-water the sediment. And it'll take a couple of days for the water to de-water, for the sediment to de-water after the storm is done, for us to be able to go in and start cleaning it out. So, if in a major storm, you see water coming over the spillway, as long as it looks like it's like, you know, weak chocolate milk, a milky chocolate milk, don't panic, that's what the debris basin's supposed to do. Most of the sediment is supposed to be, the sediment's supposed to be settling into the basin. Now, this is another exhibit that we had at an open house, and this is what we call stream stabilizers or crib dams. These are what look like concrete Lincoln Logs that dot the water courses above your neighborhoods. Now, there's a lot of confusions between the debris basins and the crib dams. And what it is, is that the crib dams here are stabilizers. They're not sediment catchment. They are there to basically flatten out the steepness of the slopes a little bit to try to slow down the flows so they don't pack quite as much a punch, and that they don't, aren't quite as erosive. So, they're there to lessen, they're there to lessen the effects of erosion, but it doesn't, but they're not sediment catchments. So, debris basin cleanouts. We immediately went in with debris basin cleanouts right after the Colby Fire and right after the major storms. We went back in there after the February 2014 storms, and also after the December 2014 storms. In addition, we've also took out sediment from a local sediment placement site nearby to create more room for emergency operations. So, all told, we've removed nearly 200,000 cubic yards since the Colby Fire from this What we've also done is we've gone in to help drain the sediment in the debris basins more efficiently, is that we installed back in 2014, last year, supplemental drainages on the sides of the dam here, inclined outlet towers. So, they help, they just help us keep things clear and to de-water the sediment that much quicker. Now, although we have a lot of facilities on here, there are additional mitigation measures that are needed after a fire. There's still a lot of nooks and crannies in between these facilities that can produce debris. So, what I'm going to be going over are public land treatments, land treatments on private property. I'm going to be going over don'ts and do's. And in relation to all of these things, what folks need to keep in mind is that Mother Nature can be very unpredictable. So, what we try to do is that we try to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. Public property land treatments. The City of Glendora took the lead in installing K-rails along select streets to channel the water and the mud and keep them in the streets and away from the homes that are along the streets that were, that were right below some of these drainage courses. Another thing is that we do keep on monitoring and cleaning out consistently are the debris basins and the catch basins. Private property preparedness, these would be measures that the homeowners would be taking into, would be taking into account, or they would do. These measures that I'm going to be showing up for the sandbags and timberboard structures and so forth, a lot of these showed up on the homeowner's advice that was given to a lot of Glendora residents right after the Colby Fire. Public Works visited about 250 properties in Glendora, and a lot of those properties got advice. So, we're going to go over some of these various, some of these various actions. Now, I'm going to go over some of the don'ts right now in regards to some of the, on these measures. You don't want to block flows. You do not- You do not want to install measures on other people's property without their permission or direct flows to your neighbors. I guarantee you, they will hate that. You do not want to park cars in flow paths on your property, and you don't want to park car, and those flow paths can also include the street that you, that you're on. Also, as reiterated earlier, do not try to enter or cross these flows. It doesn't take a very, it doesn't take very much depth of flow to knock you off your feet. While I went over a lot of don'ts, here's what you can do. If you need advice, most of you, a lot of the folks that needed advice, they got it. But if for some reason you're new to the area, you can call us for advice or see if you need it. If you're one of those that did receive advice in the past, but you can't, you can't find the advice form, give us a call and we'll dig up that, that advice that we gave you. Contact information and all that are part of the packets that are on the side tables over here. When it comes to installing especially permanent measures or developing permanent measures, you, you want to consult a licensed professional to do that. Also, another do, work with your neighbors. Another is pay attention to the forecast and be vigilant. A lot of the advice that, a lot of folks that we provided advice to, there was a box checked off on the advice form on, consider evacuating during storms. And for some of these properties, it doesn't take a very large storm for things to start happening on their property. So do be vigilant about the, about the weather forecasts. When in doubt, get out unless you're, unless you're told, unless you're told to stay in Follow the city's instructions. They're doing everything they can to protect you. So do pay, do be very vigilant and, and follow their instructions. Also, have an emergency plan for your family. Make sure that you know where everybody is, how they can get in contact with each other. Also, if you're having to leave your house, where are you going to go? That sort of thing. Also, if you're doing any sort of landscape restoration and you're in the fire area, you're probably, you may be needing a city permit in order to do that landscaping. So do check with the city planning department. We're going to go over, and here's one type of measure that folks can put on their property, and these are pipe and timber, deflection walls. These are materials that you can find at your hardware store. The maximum height on these things is about four feet high. The pipes you want to put on there, they're, you want very substantial materials, two-inch diameter, the thickest gauge that you can find for that, steel pipe. You want to get, you want to have a substantial fence post hole, about 12 feet in diameter, about four feet deep. Put that, you put that post in, and you also fill it back in with something that's called The wood, you also want to have very substantial, you probably want three-quarter inch plywood sheets or two-by-two boards. They get attached to the, the posts via U-bolts. And if you're working with this type of thing, and you're going to be anywhere near your driveway, you do want to call 811 for underground alert. And if you have, and if you have any inkling at all, or any sort of disquiet and all that, do call the city's Department of Public Works. We want to make sure that utilities don't get hit, especially things like gas lines. Window treatments. We have, this came right out of the, out of the homeowner's, out of the homeowner's guide that we have on our CARE website, C-A-R-E. Another thing also on here, it's not shown on here, are sandbags. Sandbags are used for shallower flows, where you only want to go a couple of feet high. The county advice forms, they will specify the number of sandbags you would need for your property. In the absence of advice, do check, on all of these things, do check with erosion control professionals if you don't want to have somebody come on your property and provide advice, or you think you want to have a second look, or somebody have a second opinion on the advice. By all means, contact an erosion control professional. Now, when it comes to driveways, here's a picture of one that was actually installed by a homeowner, and it's a pretty good idea. He was able to tie into a brick wall on there, and what he did is that he drilled some holes in the driveway, and then he put, he put in a pipe to use as a sleeve, and then he used another pipe that would just go right into those sleeves and then just, and then just attached the boards. Actually, he did a double course of pipes on there, so all he had to do was slip the boards in between. Now, with the, a lot of the streets with the K-rails on there, for the residents that are along the streets with the K-rails, they are, they are, along with the other private property owners on here, on here, the owners are going to be responsible for closing off their driveways. And it's, and it's really important, and it's imperative for everybody that's along those streets with the K-rails, to, everybody along that length needs to close their driveways when storms are being forecasted. It's really important for that K-rail system to work, everybody's got to do their part. So as a recap, the goal on protection measures is to, is to not block the flows. What you want to do is you want to deflect the flows around your structures. But you don't want to direct it towards your neighbors. Again, I can't, I can't emphasize this enough, that would really tick off your neighbor if you did that. You also, because we are in storms, we are in storm season now, or getting very close to it, you want to implement, you want to implement the mud flow protections as soon as possible. And then what you also want to make sure that you do is that, keep in mind that the, the measures that I just showed you on here and what would be on the advice forums, those are short-term measures only. Do consult a professional for long-term measures. And again, pay attention to the weather forecasts and to the city's instructions. And with that?
Our next speaker is, start of our first responders from public safety, and what they'll be bringing to the table as we go through this is our very well-known battalion chief, Jim Enriquez, from the Los Angeles County Fire Department. Jim?
Good afternoon. Jim Enriquez, LA County Fire Department. I'm one of your local battalion chiefs here, and we'll just introduce some of our other folks here momentarily. But just to give you an idea where we're at in the program, let me just click on my next slide here. Basically going to discuss four items here, and they're going to be continuity government, what we do in anticipation of these predicted rains, our response readiness, our, take this opportunity to remind you of our upcoming brush concerns, and we're there. You know, one hand, we're saying get ready for the rain, but yet the brush season's here, so it's kind of ironic. And then, again, our CERT program, which is very beneficial to all the communities. Regarding continuity government, so just all the other presenters, essentially what our intent was to, to remind you, educate you that this is very dangerous. We're not out of the woods yet, and it was Pat Woods for her term, but we were not out of the woods yet. We still have, you know, several years of concern and vulnerabilities. It's a real threat to us, and it's very, very dangerous. We take that very seriously. So, and despite the, the plan needs, the, the infrastructure designs, there still remains a tremendous threat. And the threat is the mud flows, the debris flows. As you can see, what happened in La Cañada, we, as first responders, there's nothing that we can do to protect you when that is occurring. We can do the best we can, but we're also in a very, very dangerous circumstance. So what we're doing, when we, in advance of the predictive rains, and when we think it's time to activate the emergency operations center here, we have had the pleasure to work here last year in EOC several times. And the way we organize it is that we, we get all the various disciplines. Mr. Jeffers becomes our leader. He's our city, our emergency manager, our, or other, we, as firepersons, we know us as our incident commander. Chief Stodd becomes our director of operations, and then we, other disciplines, we, we come together and we collaborate. We occupy this room, and our objective is continuity government despite what's going on, and with the ultimate goal and the shared goal of keeping all the residents safe. And that is our true objective. So we're out there monitoring the various intel, we're out there patrolling our, our fire patrols, we're working with the Forest Service, and our personnel is out there, police officers out there patrolling, we're getting the intel back in here. Why, why are we doing that? We're trying to anticipate and strategize what we need to do to make sure that we're taking our responsibilities safely and planning correctly. There's going to be alerts going out to the various residents. Chief Stodd will talk about the color coding and what that means to you, and why it's important to heed the warning. But you, as the residents, if you're at home and it's raining very hard, you're, of course, you're, especially if you live in one of the communities that may be impacted, that is something that you need to maintain awareness. You definitely, we have a dependency on you also doing your part. We can do our part, we're going to be ready, but then we have a dependency on you doing your part as well. And that's going to be being prepared, and we'll discuss that. But what we're doing, we're collaborating as best we can, and it's getting the best intel with the various weather services. They are the experts. We're the responders. So we're depending on them to give us at least an idea to what degree of preparedness, readiness that we need to be at, at our level. That said, we're out here getting intel, all the incidents are coming on board, and fortunately, the few times that we activated last year was several smaller incidents that took place, nothing substantial. But nevertheless, if we have competing incidents, we're going to work with Mr. Jeffers, the police chief, and we're going to collaborate, and especially we have multiple incidents simultaneously, and that's our biggest fear, is having a whole, something major happen all at once, then we have numerous things that we need to address right now. That occurs, we're going to be prioritizing, and we're working with the, again, the various disciplines to determine that. So last year, we had several things. What we do with the, with the public works and on the fireside, we pre-stage any, any, our, our fire assets and to respond. What we do is at LA County Fire Department, we'll, we'll move up our skip loaders as our front loaders. We have a large front-wheel track loader, which is three-yard, can carry our, our personnel. We also pre-stage our urban search and rescue personnel, and they're monitoring and they're ready to go. But nevertheless, it doesn't mean that we're going to commit, commit the individuals. Each, if we actually have a response into a neighborhood, somebody chooses not to leave when we ask you to leave, especially when it's a mandatory evacuation, and you happen to be caught up in a substantial rainstorm, we have a debris, substantial release. As you can see, there's a, the threat is there, and I know we use it, all these technical terms and, but I look at a slippage, you know, it's, all this stuff's going to slip all at once, and you get that momentum, you get the snowball effects, and there's nothing that we can do trying to go up there to stop that. So we take that very seriously, be, on a case-by-case basis, but nevertheless, we will stand ready and wait for the threat to pass by, then we'll reevaluate and assess whether we can access the specific area. So some of the, so that's what we're doing here. We're working together, but it is a real threat. But we are ready, and just, we take it lightly, and we, we're going to stay here in the emergency operation, working collaboratively, collaboratively, and with, again, with the ultimate goal of continuity government, keeping the roads open, keeping the public safe, and barring the rainstorm. And when the threat diminishes, then we'll close up, and when the next one occurs, what Mr. Jeffrey usually does, he sends us an email, hey, another storm's coming. We'll convene, we start dialogue with the weather services, and we, we discuss whether we need to staff up or not. So that'll be occurring, imagine, it sounds like, for the next few seasons, but we'll be doing that regularly. The good thing that we're gaining experience, and we're gaining, we're learning from it, and each time we, we come together, we're a little bit smarter, a little bit more experienced. So we're, that's going to continue. Regarding the response, again, as I discussed, we will be pre-staging both police and fire. We staff up. We also working closely with the Forest Service personnel, they're staffing up, and they're, because they have certainly a threat as well. And we're ready to respond. Our helicopters, our copters are available, but nevertheless, depending on the, on the potential flight restrictions or the visibility, there's some, some things that restrict our copter pilot from flying. But we're going to do the same thing and just be ready. But we do ask that you, yourselves, take each morning seriously and help us keep you safe. So I'm going to move on, discuss this upcoming fire season threat. We're in it right now. Traditionally and seasonally, this is the time of year that San Andreas kick in, and next year, and then, as you know, it has even gone into December and January, hence the Colby Fire happened in January. So what we're doing, we can't stop that. We staff up as well for that. We get our personnel ready. We're working with the predictive services and staffing up as well. What you can do as, as residents, what you can do as homeowners is help us, again, within the fire service, we, we have the term defensible space, and we, and we have our, our fire personnel out there inspecting your homes along the foothills every season. And I can tell you right now, that for those, all you that were very proactive in the Colby Fire, had you not had defensible space, had you not cleared the appropriate brush away from your homes, there would have been a lot more homes burnt. So you helped us keep your homes safe. We were able to get our personnel in between your home and the vegetations that were not uncleared, and protect many, many hundreds, if not thousands, of homes. So thank you for that. But we do ask that you continue that vigilance and maintain that, that defensible, defensible space. That is a true, that will save your structure as a home. And again, these wind-driven fires, you can see what has happened up north, thousands of homes lost. I mean, it was just, just very, very sad on the circumstances out there. Well, guess what? Traditionally and seasonally, it starts up there and it moves over here. And so now, the, many of those firefighters that are, were up north, as we did, we went up north and helped them. They're going to be coming back here and helping us here in LA Basin and San Diego Basin. Why? Because that's where the winds are going to shift. So we'll be ready for that, but again, we ask you to keep that defensible space, be very vigilant, any dead fuels around your home that you keep clear, any wood chip, anything that's maybe flammable, that when the winds, when the winds are predicted, that you just take the walk around your home. If a fire starts tomorrow, tonight, is there going to be a threat? And it's just, a lot of it's common sense, the continuity of fuel is going to continue to burn, it creates a tremendous amount of radiant heat, and it catches your homes or your eaves on fire. So we want to just keep all that clearance. So let's get to a point where you've done that, and now you're getting ready, we're, the San Andreas are kicking in, and as they're going to occur this, on Friday and Saturday, although to lesser degree, but nevertheless, you need to have an emergency plan. That was discussed, and the term that we use in the fire service that's consistent is ready, set, go. What ready means is that you, as a homeowner, is that you're doing that. You're doing the vigilance, you're doing awareness of your home, you're keeping your, your defensible space. You're being, getting an emergency plan in place. And the emergency plans that we reference is that, as you can do, is, we have, the mnemonic, we have six Ps, and that we reference, that's your, your people and pets. Again, just account for different people who's in your residence. Some have any special needs. Your certain pets as well, often forget about our pets. On the larger pets, larger animals, equine, that becomes very problematic as we're trying to move those larger animals. So we usually can arrange that, but it's usually during the emergency, and that does take resources and distracts, but we definitely want to have them planned in place. But the intent is to get them actually moved in advance of the emergency. So the people and pets, you want to account for always, make sure you look at the different challenges or needs of individuals of your home. Papers, your emergency papers, your, your, any papers, any documents that are, that is essential for you to continue your life, your business, and references. You want to get all your essential documents ready. You want to make sure that, your, any prescription medication, your eyeglasses. You want to have all that ready to go. Your personal computer, often we, many of our important affairs are on our computers, and we want to make sure we keep that ready to go. And then your plastic, your credit cards, your ATMs. There was several incidents that occurred during the Colby Fire, because as you know, it happened very early at 6:00 in the morning, where our individuals, our firefighters are going into your neighborhood, going and banging on your door, waking you up, said, you need to get out right now. And many of the individual homeowners had no idea their fire was occurring. They wake up, they hear somebody slamming on their door, wondering what's going on, and they can start smelling the smoke and seeing the debris flying, and they went in a panic mode. Imagine that, being woken up and your fire's right on your backyard. You're going to panic. So that's just, just, that's just nature, that's, for those of us in your unfamiliar circumstances, that's the first thing we do. We, we don't know what to do. So what we don't want, that is, we don't want that to happen. We want you to be ready, you know, hence the term, ready. So we're going to have you get ready, do, go home, think about those things. We have some brochures here that can guide you, how to get ready. The next one is get set, as, and this can be applied not only for just your brush fires, but even for our upcoming potential rain storms, is the ready, set, go, the same plan applies. And that's now, when we ask you, when Chief Stodd discussed the, the potential, the various color coding, that'd be getting set. In other words, there's a, you're, you're being made aware that there's a potential threat, there might be a need for you to go. So you need to get set. So, you need to get set. So, the term is that you start gathering your documents, you get the plan in place, maybe rehearse it a couple times with you, or especially if you have small children, go through rehearsal, if they would, define your trigger points, what a trigger point means, if it gets here, we're leaving, and identify whatever's going to give you adequate time to escape from that circumstance. So, identify where that may be. So, so now you get set. So, essentially, it's almost like running a race, and then when we ask you to go, it's time to go. It's not time to stay at home. We're asking you to leave for a reason, because we want to keep you safe, want to keep you alive. If you choose not to leave, then you become, we, we document, and as we know, that we're still residents, but then you, you do become a, a special concern for us, because we know that now we have to occupy and direct resources in case we need to extract you if we can. Again, we don't want to do that. And particularly, if you have large animals, you have a large equine, we truly ask you truly leave, and, and leave with your animals, because large animals create even extra problems. We've had situation where how, while horses, homeowners panicked, they just opened the gates for the horses to get loose, and they're running down the street, and they're smashing the people, smashing their cars, hitting our fire engines, and they can kill someone. Likewise, individual homeowners, we've had circumstances where finally, you choose not to leave, and then you leave when your house is on fire, and you're leaving in a panic. Through smoke and debris, you hardly can breathe, you can't see, and you're going to run into one of our firefighters, or you're going to run into our truck. That's why we ask you to leave in advance, not when you're panicking, or when you're about to die. We, we don't want to ever get to that point. So, hence the term, when we ask you to go, it's time to go. So, that's our role, is to keep you safe. And we truly, that's why we're all here, that's why we're going to staff the EOC, we're all going to collaborate, and we're working together with this common goal of doing that. Our local firefighters back here, we have our other chief, La Riva, our captain, John Flores, he was, we were shoulder, shoulder in the Colby fire, just were trying to make decisions that render you safe and, and protect property as best we can. Finally, we do want to touch on the CERT community response teams. Here in the area, we have some very active communities, Azusa being one of them, as well as Clermont. We're going to be hosting a CERT class sometime in early to mid 2016, and we'll be putting that information out. The intent of CERT is to make sure that we have a, a group of people who are ready to render assistance on a large event like an earthquake, when the fire department might be, might be exhausted resources, that at least you can get in there and lend a helping hand to your neighbors, your family, when we're unable to respond immediately. And at the end, we'll entertain questions. Thank you.
Last but not least, by any means, is our chief of police, Tim Stodd, and he's going to talk about the protocols and our police response. Tim?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time. This is a fantastic turnout, we really appreciate it, coming out here, taking interest in this, this very important topic. You know, this is the, the part of the presentation where you're probably saying to yourself, okay, here comes the police chief, and he's going to tell you, if you're in the Colby fire impact area and it begins to rain, get out. And so, and so I'm not going to disappoint you. When it rains and you're in the Colby fire impact area, get out. Listen, our, our goal is to protect life and property, that's what the Glendora Police Department is here for. And, and like I did last year, I'll, I'll do it again. I apologize in advance, we are going to inconvenience you when it rains. We're going to, we're going to keep you from parking on your streets if you're in the Colby fire impact area. When the rain comes especially heavy, we're going to ask you to evacuate your home. Mark Jackson and his crew, they are, as I said last year, rock stars when it comes to predicting weather, but it's not 100%. And so, we, we know that we're going to issue yellow and orange alerts and red alerts, and, and we're going to do so. That rain's going to pass, and it's not going to be an emergency, and so, inconvenience, we apologize in advance. Now, we have ability to contact you. If you are in that Colby fire impact area, we have NICSIL 360, it's a reverse 911 system. And so, if we have your name, we have your address, we have your telephone numbers, if they're all current, and an emergency happens, we can notify sections of the city. If you, if you're not sure if we have your, your address and name and correct phone numbers, we have our Glendora Police Department's social media team, we have Lieutenant Matt Williams, and Corporal Shawna Solello. Shawna, stand up. Yay, wave at everybody, exactly. And we've got Jamie Bampa. Jamie and Shawna both work day shift, you can give them a call if you don't want to go with, up to them. Matt works nights, you can tell his, I got him up early, his, his eyes are half closed. But we've got other ways, just pay attention to, to the, the media, we've got Facebook, we've got the city website, we've got Glendora website, we've, we certainly have Zach in the back there, that if, if you know anything about his Glendora community news, he, he keeps everybody up to date. We still have our, our Glendora Police Department NOAA official radios, one sitting in my office, one sitting in the watch commander's office, and one in Chris's office. We try to keep you updated, but the, the, the warning is, obviously, is, is that we do our best, but sometimes we may not be able to notify you, just stay alert. Colby fire impact area, everyone knows, probably north of Sierra Madre, to the, to the city limits, on one side, and to Lorraine, and even as far as GMR on the other. Green means no weather conditions, everything's clear for the next few days. Yellow simply means that a storm is coming, and that we put parking restrictions in place if you're in the Colby fire impact area. We want to keep vehicles and trashcans out of the streets, no evacuation orders. We want to keep cars and trashcans out of the streets, because as you can see here, just five years ago in La Cañada, they become projectiles. And so, just, just, we want, we want to keep those, or those streets clear. Orange, people ask us why we put in four levels. We've got green, yellow, orange, and red. We didn't want to go from yellow to red, we wanted to give one more layer, and, and that is, a, a pretty good storm's coming within the next 24 hours, but evacuations are still voluntary. We open up our evacuation center, it's always at the teen center, down off of Glendora and Dawson by the golf course, and we'll have people patrolling that area to be the eyes and ears up there, because again, storm predicting isn't 100%, so we put people where we need people to be. Red is mandatory evacuation orders. People always ask me, are you going to drag me out of the house? And the, the answer is, yes, no. The cops are not going to knock on doors and yank people out of their houses, we want you to go. And when it's red, we're, we're telling you it's red for a reason. And so, if that water starts flowing, folks, we can't get to you, we can't rescue you. LA County Fire, the finest, we're fortunate here in Glendora, I swear that we are, the finest municipal fire department in, not only in California, but the United States and the entire world, I would say, but they can't get to you when that water's flowing. Y'all saw the, the video in La Cañada Flint Ridge, that, that water will scoop you up. And I, I looked it up, remember, it was only just a few short weeks ago, that, that a flash flood claimed the life of a hiker just up in Azusa Canyon by that nowhere bridge. Last month, on September 8th, a 25-year-old hiker in Big Bear, a flash flood came, and somebody lost their life. And then, a, a year ago, up in Mount Baldy, a motorist driving down the street, up, on the, on the road up in Baldy, got swept up and, and was killed. And, and I can tell you that it's, it's, you know, for the next five years while we're under threat of floods and mud flow, that's, that's our greatest concern, we can't lose anybody, we can't lose our residents. And so, shelter in place, if it, if, if water's flowing, shelter in place. It's too late to go once that water's flowing, so find someplace that's safe. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Jeffers.
We are coming to the point of question and answers. If you have a card with your question, just raise it, and we have our cadets who will come through and pick them up. Just to sort of summarize everything again, we recognize we're going to inconvenience you, I can't stress what the chief said. But again, our single purpose is protection of life and property as we go through this. And so, we figure, and hopefully you believe, that a little inconvenience is worth that ability for us to do our job, protect your lives and your property, and so bear with us and work with us through that. There's lots of information out there, I do strongly encourage you, if you aren't part of our NICSIL or our alert systems for Facebook, Twitter, please sign up for that, especially today, if not this soon, as we go through that, because that's the one way that we're going to try to get you as best the information as quickly as possible, and that helps you be safe for your loved ones as you go through that. You know, in 1969, you saw some of those pictures where people were literally trapped in their homes, and you can imagine, if you're trapped in your home, time seems to not exist, it seems to drag on. And if you're trapped in that home for an hour, it may seem like a day, if you're in there for several hours, it could be like a week. And if you've got somebody with special needs, needs medication, or is ambulatory in some manner, you can imagine how difficult it is for them to do that. Hence why, when we ask you to leave, please leave. Don't second guess, don't try to go out and observe the festivities of water running through the streets, it's nothing but danger. And the last thing we want to do is pay mourning to somebody that's been lost in this endeavor. So, we can't emphasize that enough, we're here to protect you and your life as we go through that. And finally, before we get to a question, I really want to urge you, you know, people talk that Washington and Sacramento are dysfunctional, and they probably are. But I can tell you that the people over there that represent these fine offices and departments and entities, both federal, state, county, are really, have one single goal and one purpose, is that's to help Glendora's community. And I can tell you, as you've seen, Dennis is flown in from Colorado from here, Mark has driven down from Oxnard to be here to speak to you personally. The hours that they put in and effort that they put in is above everything else, and you have everything to be proud of, these public servants being there for you, to give you the best. Plus, the hundreds of men and women that are out in the field, as you see some of the Forest Service and fire personnel and police officers, that will be out there in those shivering rain, helping and doing what we are paid to do, is protect you and your property. So, again, let me give, ask you to give a big hand to these people, because they deserve it.[1791.88]